I'd like to call this meeting at the border, a public meeting of the Board of Presidents of the City University of New York. Meetings of the Board are open to the public and we welcome the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to our regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. The Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs at which members of the public may also speak. Written communications to the Board are routinely distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warnings, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The University may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the University's rules or state laws which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone or BlackBerry? Thank you. CUNY TV is transmitting the public session of this Board meeting live on cable channel 75. The meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream, providing service worldwide via personal computers and mobile devices. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. I know that I speak on behalf of all the trustees in congratulating Chancellor Milligan and all those at CUNY who worked on the development, implementation, and expansion of the CUNY ASAP program. You have at your seat samples of the most recent media coverage, including a New York Times editorial last week, now the second one, in which ASAP has been recognized as an outstanding national model program. And the Daily News had an editorial yesterday. I believe you're all aware of the multi-year study by the Manpower Demonstration Research Corporation which evaluated ASAP and cites the program as a national model to be replicated. I received a telephone call last week from Governor Bill Haslam of Tennessee who expressed great interest in the program, called it "the best in the country of its kind." Our Chancellor has previously reported that the Ohio Board of Regents plans to replicate ASAP in three of its community colleges. The White House has also been quite vocal in citing CUNY's ASAP program as a national model. These efforts help to position CUNY nationally at the forefront of the college completion issue and provides a solution to the dropout epidemic which affects community colleges, particularly in urban settings throughout the United States. New York State and New York City should be particularly proud of their interest in CUNY and in our development of programs such as ASAP. I want to thank the trustees, presidents, members of the Chancellery, students, and faculty who attended the New York State Black Puerto Rican, Hispanic, and Asian Legislative Caucus during the weekend of February 13 through February 15. Our Board was represented by Vice Chairperson Philip Berry, Trustee Frida Foster, Trustee Rita DiMartino, the University Student Chair and Trustee Joseph Awaji. Chancellor Milligan made two awards; he may want to inform us about that enduring his report to us today. Congratulations to Trustee Rita DiMartino, who has been appointed as a member of the Departmental Disciplinary Committee of the New York County Supreme Court Appellate Division in the First Department. Our thanks to Trustee Terrence Martel and the University Faculty Senate for organizing the CUNY-SUNY-UFS Poster Day Event in Albany on February 11. This year it was graduate students at all the collective schools who had the opportunity to display their work. There was an impressive and inspiring display at the Legislative Office Building, and Vice Chancellor for Research Gillian Small represented CUNY there. The Board held its Brooklyn Borough hearing in conjunction with the public hearing on the calendar of this Board meeting on February 17, 2015. Trustee Frida Foster chaired the hearing that was also attended by Trustee Wellington Chen, University Student Chair, Senate Chair, and Trustee Joseph Awaji, as well as members of the Chancellery. A summary of the proceedings has been circulated to the trustees and to the Chancellor's Cabinet, and a transcript is available in the office of the Secretary. Now, for the latest exciting sports news. Baruch College and Brooklyn College played a championship doubleheader this weekend as the two schools matched up in both the men's and women's finals in the 50th Annual Event. First, the Baruch women took home their eighth straight title by a score of 60 to 39. Next, the Baruch men won their second title ever in one of the most dramatic games in CUNY's basketball tournament history. The Baruch Bearcats won 90 to 83 in a double overtime. The NCAA postseason draw will be announced today. The indoor track and field championships took place Sunday, with CUNY taking home both the men's and the women's titles. The most outstanding part of the track meet was actually Lehman's MVP Adriana Wright, who broke two all-time NCAA Division III records and three CUNY championship meet records for the sixth-ranked Lightning. On a sad note, we mourn the passing of President Antonio Perez's mother, Delia Perez, who passed away on February 21st. Please accept our deepest condolences, Professor Perez, President Perez. May I now call on Trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Baruch College ranked fourth among top colleges for finance and financial management by USA Today and College Factual. Also, Baruch ranked in Princeton Review's 2015 list of top 200 colleges that pay you back. Congratulations. Queens College professor Alfredo Moraba, a renowned researcher, author, professor of epidemiology, and fellow of the Royal College of Physicians in Edinburgh, will take the helm of the American Public Health Association's American Journal of Public Health in June 2015. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I call on Trustee Frida Foster to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several CUNY students qualified for the National Debate Tournament Championships, the most prestigious event in varsity college debate. They are Baruch College students Abdallah Ayez and Alondo McIntyre, the first in the college's history to do so. John Jay College student Hadassah Yizriel was a semifinalist in the Junior Varsity Regional Championships at the same event. To qualify, our students competed head-to-head with debaters from NYU, Cornell, and West Point, among others. Congratulations. Hunter College High School student Kalia Firester has been named an Intel STS finalist. She is the only finalist from the New York City area. Kalia will be traveling to Washington, D.C. in March where she will compete among the nation's 40 finalists for top scholarships of up to $150,000. Congratulations. Seven LaGuardia Community College students were recognized for their performances in the Bengal Tiger at the Baghdad Zoo, rising to the next level of competition at the Kennedy Center's American Collegiate Theater Festival, Region One. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. You have at the table a list of grants and gifts received by the University since our January 26, 2015, meeting. May I now call on Chancellor Milligan to present his update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm happy to join with the Chair in welcoming all of you to the March Board Meeting. I also join with Chairperson Schmidt in commending the team that's worked on ASAP, or ASAP. The senior university dean, John Mogalescu, university dean Donna Linderman, and their team for their tremendous success. And I also want to compliment the presidents of our community colleges without whose cooperation, participation, and enthusiastic role in this, we would not have been successful. At the MDRC announcement last week that the Chair mentioned, the mayor was represented by First Deputy Mayor Tony Shoros, who participated with us, and it was clear took pride in the city's investment in our success. ASAP now operates at seven CUNY colleges, and we are about to launch a new pilot program at John Jay College of Criminal Justice. ASAP's stunning results in boosting graduation rates deserve the national attention the program has received. According to MDRC's study, not only are more than half of ASAP students graduating within three years, more than 40% graduate in two and a half years, compared to 15% in the comparison group. Best of all, because the program generates so many more graduates, the cost per degree is lower despite the substantial investment to operate the program. So ASAP produces more graduates in less time for less money. There's good reason that CUNY and ASAP were singled out by President Obama as a program others should emulate. In fact, I look forward, we sent Governor Haslam from Tennessee a packet of material today. We continue to work with the community colleges in Ohio. I firmly believe that if more community colleges across the country would adopt ASAP-like programs, it would significantly change the community college experience for the better. We have received both the governor's executive budget for fiscal 2015 to 16 and the mayor's fiscal year 2015 to 16 preliminary budget, and have been reviewing them and discussing them with policymakers in both the city and in Albany. Both have some positive developments. I have outlined some from the executive budget of the state previously. With the city's budget, most notably, the multi-year $150 million commitment from the mayor to support STEM graduates and other programs at our community colleges, including the expansion of ASAP, will enter its second year as planned. I'm going to ask Vice Chancellor Sapienza to review a few key points regarding the state budget when I'm finished, including changes since the last meeting of the Board through the 30-day amendment process, but first I want to offer a few comments of my own. Our top priority remains the resolution of our collective bargaining agreements with the faculty and staff. As you know, the University's contract with our faculty expired in 2010. It's essential that we get the state's support for the terms of an agreement that would be in line with those of other unions, including retroactive increases that would recognize the commitment of our faculty and staff. Years without across-the-board increases are creating a deepening problem. We're in a competition for talent, and our faculty salaries are well below that of other public universities in the region. With record enrollments and a universally recognized need to increase educational attainment levels, we cannot afford to lose qualified faculties or be unable to recruit new faculty. The imperative of reaching a resolution with our faculty and staff is clear. If CUNY is to attract and retain top talent, we must, as we must, we need a collective bargaining agreement with appropriate salary and benefits. I have made this point clear in every single conversation I have had with state and city officials. In that regard, it's been suggested to me that I could be more clear, making it known that I'm including CUNY's dedicated and hard-working adjunct instructors when discussing the need for a new contract. I didn't realize there was any confusion, but let me be very clear. Our adjunct faculty deserve recognition and long overdue raises. They provide a critical component to our ability to offer a high-quality education to our students, and we are grateful for their contributions. Now, even without taking into account a contract with our faculty and staff, the proposed executive budget presents some significant cuts to the senior colleges. $51 million, or a little over 4% of the senior college base aid budget, would be reduced by this budget. This includes unfunded mandatory needs of $25 million for fringe benefits, $10 million for energy costs, $8 million for building rentals, and $8 million for salary steps that have previously been included in the state's budget. It's clear from the 2011 State Higher Education Act that these amounts were not to be funded from tuition. However, that is in fact the only source of additional available funding in the budget. So unless this shortfall is addressed by the legislature, we will be in a difficult position. In addition to the fiscal matters in the budget, there are a number of substantive policy changes that we believe require much discussion and review before adoption. These are matters that go to the heart of academic decision-making and governance. I'll ask Matt to review several of them with you when he discusses the budget. I know that you join me in urging the legislature to address these matters, both fiscal and policy. As a first step in that process, on February 10, I appeared before the New York State Senate Finance and Assembly Ways and Means Committees. I had the opportunity to meet after with several members of the leadership for further discussions. I want to mention the good work of our presidents, their staff, faculty, and students in carrying the same message to our elected officials. We're pleased that so many delegations have traveled to Albany on an ongoing basis, including some today. I had dinner last week, Thursday, with Trustee Awaji, and he was having trouble keeping his eyes open. I assumed it was my company, but he assured me that it was because he got up at 4:30 that morning to join six busloads of students traveling to Albany for a lobby day. We could not have more authentic and effective advocates on CUNY's behalf, and I want to thank Trustee Awaji and his colleagues in the Student Senate and the student bodies at CUNY for their strong support and their good work. Within days of my testimony, I made a second visit to Albany, which was downright celebratory. As Chairperson Schmidt mentioned, we held the CUNY Black Puerto Rican, Hispanic, and Asian Caucus luncheon, joined with a number of trustees. As the Chair mentioned, we had the great honor of presenting the CUNY Educational Leadership Award to Ms. Arva Rice, President and CEO of the New York Urban League, an institution that for 90 years has helped underserved communities surmount educational and economic obstacles, and most recently published the Parents' Guide to STEM. Second award went to David Banks, a CUNY alumnus and the founder of the Eagle Academy Foundation, dedicated to providing young urban men quality education and supporting them to achieve their highest aspirations. We look forward to enrolling their graduates. We will have some competition for their graduates. I met one of them at the 100 Black Men Celebration a little over a week ago, who had applied to and been accepted at 22 colleges across the country. So we're going to have to step up our recruiting game. We were joined that day at the celebration by many state legislators, including the newly-elected Speaker Carl Hasty, the Secretary of State Eric Schneiderman, State Controller Tom Donapoli, and City Controller Scott Stringer. We received great media coverage for an event, and it was terrific to see the support that CUNY has from so many of our state officials. If you haven't been to one of these events before, I would urge you to attend one in the future. Not only is it a great showing of our students and our friends in Albany, but it is a chance to see Y.J. Hershinson as a leading candidate to replace Jon Stewart on The Daily Show. There are a number of developments relating to CUNY's ongoing work in sustainability in many areas. I plan to report more fully on this in the future. I know it's an area that the entire Board is interested in. Today, I'm pleased to report that CUNY will receive an $860,000 grant from the Department of Energy to help develop the market for resilient solar power in New York City and New York State so that solar installations can operate during power outages. This investment will be increased by the state to a total of $1.3 million. It's conceived and managed by University Director of Sustainability, Tria Case. The latest New York City executive budget includes three new positions for solar ombudsman to continue CUNY's work in making the city and state make greater use of renewable energy. We're pleased to continue to play a role in this work. Our ongoing work in Jamaica Bay to make the federal marshlands more resilient to storm damage is continuing to progress, and the New York City Department of Administrative Services announced that CUNY's community colleges will receive an additional $2 million for a total of $8 million to make our campuses more energy efficient. And finally, a $500,000 grant from the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority will fund a new project by Sanji Banerjee, Director of the CUNY Energy Institute, to develop a next-generation battery for energy storage that is long-lasting, high-energy, low-cost, and safe for urban environments. We continue to be deeply involved in efforts both in the city and state and the nation to find strategies for sustainable energy in sustainable cities. Finally, this year, something that this Board has been used to probably every year at this time, CUNY has received, again, a large number of regional Emmy Award nominations. This year, an unprecedented eight such nominations. I want to commend CUNY TV and Director Robert Isaacson for this impressive showing. Stay tuned for the announcement of the winners on May 2. We hope we won't go into double overtime that evening. Now, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Vice Chancellor Sapienza to add a few elements from his analysis of the state budget proposal.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good afternoon, everyone. The Chancellor talked about in his remarks some of the numbers and some of the shortfalls that we're facing in the budget, but what I want to spend a few minutes on is talking about the policy initiatives that the governor included in his executive proposal, because there were several higher education initiatives that he proposed. The first one that he announced, which was even before the budget came out, was the Get on Your Feet Loan Forgiveness Program, whereby students who attended college in New York and continue to live in New York and who participate in the federal Pay as You Earn program, if those students earn less than $50,000 a year, the state would cover the costs of their loan payments for the first two years. So that was a financial aid program that he had proposed. Some of the academic items that he proposed, he called for the elimination of State Education Department approval for new program and degree requirements. So new program and degree requirements would only need Board of Trustees approval at both CUNY and SUNY and would not necessarily need to go to the State Education Department under that proposal. Another item that he proposed that has a significant academic impact is he called for a requirement for graduation for every student at SUNY and CUNY would need to have a component of experiential learning as part of their curriculum. And so that, again, was something that has a significant academic impact. He also called for some administrative changes, such as the proposal to have CUNY and SUNY work together to consolidate some back-office functions such as human resources, IT, and finance. And then the last two I want to mention, I want to spend a little time on these because, as the Chancellor mentioned in his remarks, there were some changes to these last two, and that is the Dream Act and Performance Improvement Plans. So first, the Dream Act. The Dream Act would include support for undocumented students by allowing them to apply for state tuition assistance, something that the University has been very supportive of for many years. And the governor's budget does include support for the Dream Act. In the governor's proposal, he called for the Dream Act to be tied to another proposal, which was the Education Tax Credit Initiative, whereby folks who provide support for education initiatives or education programs throughout the state would get a tax credit at the end of the year. And so those two items, the Education Tax Credit and the Dream Act, were tied together in the governor's executive budget proposal. Neither of them were, in the way it was crafted, in the way the language was crafted, can be approved on their own. They had to be either approved together or dismissed together by the legislature. The other item that I want to talk about is Performance Improvement Plans. The governor added $12 million in his budget proposal for CUNY's senior colleges, $18 million for SUNY's senior colleges, that would help colleges reach certain goals that is called for in these Performance Improvement Plans. Things like improving access, improving completion rates, improving post-graduation outcomes. There were many items that were called for as part of these Performance Improvement Plans, and the $12 million would go to help colleges meet those goals. There were no funds added for the community colleges as part of the Performance Improvement Plans, although the proposal calls for the community colleges to participate in submitting the plans. And the executive budget also included language that said 10% of CUNY's appropriation at both the senior colleges and the community colleges would be held in reserve until the plans were submitted to the state. So, the governor proposed his executive budget on January 21. As part of state law, the governor then has 30 days to submit amendments to that budget. And so about 10 days ago, the governor did submit dozens of amendments to his executive budget, and two of them that I want to mention today are in regards to those last two items I mentioned, the Dream Act and Performance Improvement Plans. So first, the Dream Act. I just mentioned a minute ago that in the executive proposal, Dream Act was tied to the Education Tax Credit, and it's still tied to that as part of the amendments, but one change that the governor made to that was both of these items are now tied to TAP appropriations, meaning that if both of those items do not pass as part of the adopted budget, that funding for TAP would not be released by the state for the next academic year. So that's a major change that was made by the governor as part of the 30-day amendments. On the Performance Improvement Plans, the 30-day amendments included another approval level, which is the initial executive budget proposal calls for 10% of the funds to be held in reserve until the plans are approved by the Board of Trustees and submitted to the state. But the 30-day amendments called for the plans to also be approved by the state budget director until our 10% total appropriation that would be held in reserve would be released. And so we wanted to make sure that you were aware of not only these initiatives that are proposed as part of the executive budget, that have significant policy impact, but also the changes that were made in the 30-day amendments that changed the original executive budget proposal that we had discussed at last month's Board of Trustees' meeting. Happy to take any questions?
With the trustees' permission, I'd like to read a short statement into the record as regards Governor Cuomo's mandate for experiential learning requirements for all students in CUNY and SUNY. This will not take too long, but I think it's a critical issue. While there may be benefits to experiential learning, the abbreviated timeframe and the circumvention of normal curriculum approval processes at both the faculty and the Board of Trustees' level requires that we identify some concerns for consideration as this process unfolds. There are three particular concerns that I'd like to raise: student concerns, institutional concerns, and curricular concerns. I have a few highlights for each one. With regard to student concerns, unpaid experiential learning requirements resulting in additional non-classroom hours may undo a burden working students and/or students who are primary caregivers. Some students may already have ample experiential learning. International students and students attending online may have limitations on their ability to work. Some community college students may be unclear about their ultimate career aspirations, complicating the identification of suitable experiential learning opportunities. Institutional concerns that the Board... Institutional concerns that the board, this board should think about includes implementing an experiential learning program across 21 campuses and a quarter of a million students who require significant allocation of resources for revising curriculum, securing placements, interviewing students, and providing oversight in the field. Committing to this mandate may negatively impact CUNY's budget in the future as the governor moves to a pay-for-performance plan. Since completion of experiential learning opportunities may be beyond the university's control, it will impact retention and graduation rates. In addition, the university may be exposed to workplace issues including compensation, sexual harassment, discrimination, workplace violence, et cetera. The addition of experiential learning for credit will require either expanding current programs or eliminating academic coursework. This carries implications for previous curricular policies of the board. The governor's proposal, depending on how it evolves, and that, of course, is important, will impact in an uncertain way the life of every student of CUNY. More fundamentally, the governor's proposal creates a dangerous precedent and opens this university to whatever the then-current curricular flavor of the month will be. Taking the decisions out of the hands of the faculty and the board is a mistake. Having said that, we hope the board will engage with the Chancellery and the faculty on these and other concerns, and the faculty look forward to collaborating to make this policy as palatable as possible. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to Professor Martel's remarks on experiential learning that although the requirement is included in the executive budget proposal, there were no additional funds added in the executive budget proposal to implement this new requirement.
Are there other comments or questions for the Chancellor or for Matt on their reports?
Yes, just one quick question. On the holding of the, thank you, the TAP funds hostage, for lack of a better word, to the passage of both the Dream Act as well as the Tax Credit Program, is it the entire TAP program that is held up for the passage of these two?
Yes, there would be no TAP appropriations that would be made in the next academic year if those two proposals are not passed by the legislature.
For the student representative, I'm prepared to march with you.
Are there other comments or questions on the Chancellor's report or for what Matt has reported? All right, yes.
Just one, Matt. Do you know what kind of response there's been in the legislature to these recent changes over the last 30 days?
We've had discussion with, on the staff level with folks from both Senate Finance and Assembly Ways and Means about it. There's concern that's been communicated, and I'm sure this will be a big part of the negotiations that happen with the executive branch as part of the adopted budget, but there has been concern that's been communicated to us for those amendments.
Yes.
If I can just make a quick comment, the legislature has to first agree to what are called a veils, how much revenues are available. Once there is agreement on a veils, both houses are moving towards one-house resolutions where the Senate will express its views on the executive budget and the Assembly will express its views on the executive budget, and that's when the real negotiations begin.
Other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. Thank you, Matt. We'll turn now to the policy items that require our vote. I move the adoption of the Chancellor's University Report for January 26, 2015. You'll find a copy of this report at the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions on the Chancellor's report or discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, the university report is adopted. I'll move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of January 26, 2015. You'll find a copy of the minutes in your meeting books behind the tab for Section 2. Are there any revisions that are needed for these minutes? If not, may I have a second for their adoption? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, the minutes are adopted. We'll turn now to our committee reports. We'll hear first from the Committee on Fiscal Affairs, Trustee Loda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs, as well as the Subcommittee on Audit and the Subcommittee on Investments, met in joint session on February 2nd, 2015. After approval of the prior Fiscal Affairs Meeting minutes, the committee approved the following resolution. Calendar Item 3A is a resolution that enables eligible veterans as well as the spouses and dependents of certain service members be charged the same tuition rate as New York residents to the extent required under federal or state law effective June 1st, 2015. While the university already has a similar policy, this new resolution will put our veterans' tuition policy strictly in line with the new federal and state requirements which were issued this past August. This policy, therefore, supersedes the policy that was approved on June 24th, 2013 by this board and is effective June 1st, 2015 to coincide with the summer 2015 term. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and the adoption of Calendar Item 3A.
Thank you. I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee on the veterans' tuition? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, that item is adopted.
Calendar Item 3B is a resolution authorizing the CUNY School of Law to purchase goods and services for the upgrade of the audiovisual system in the Law School's Dave Field Auditorium and the addition of video teleconferencing and lecture capture systems. Such project shall not exceed a cost of $800,000. The purchase consists of major replacement, update, and upgrade of the AV system in the auditorium. Although the Law School moved into its current facility in 2012, all of the AV equipment was inherited from the building's previous owner, and most of it has been in place since the facility was originally built in 2006. Thus, the existing AV infrastructure has reached and, in some cases, gone beyond the end of its useful life. The current system is obsolete, no longer functions properly, and requires frequent repairs. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and the adoption of Calendar Item 3B.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee on 3B? Not? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, abstentions, that's adopted.
Following the approval of Action Items A and B, the Vice Chancellor Sapienza gave a report on the proposed state executive budget. Following this report, the Subcommittee on Audit was convened under the chairmanship of Trustee Peter Pantaleo, and after approval of the minutes of the meeting of the Subcommittee of November 3rd, the committee approved the fiscal year 2014 A-133 draft audit report following a presentation by KPMG. After adjourning the Subcommittee on Audit, the Subcommittee on Investments was convened. After the approval of its prior meeting's minutes, the meeting was adjourned to go into executive session. Following executive session, there were no additional items on the agenda for the Subcommittee on Investments. Accordingly, the meeting was adjourned. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I'm informed that the Chancellor's University Report, which we just approved, is dated February 2015, not January 26th. So, for your information, I had the date wrong on that report. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. I'd like to call on Trustee Wellington Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At its February 2nd, 2015 meeting, the committee approved the following policy matters. Calendar Number 4A, Baruch College, Bachelor of Science in Financial Engineering. Building upon their success with the Master of Science in Financial Engineering, which is ranked the fourth-best such program in the country, Baruch College seeks to launch a similar undergraduate program. In addition to preparing students for direct employment and doctoral programs, it will also serve as a feeder program for the MS degree. Coursework for the program includes economics, profitability, and statistics, calculus, computer programming, and data analysis, and simulation for financial engineers. Graduates of the MS program will have a very high success rate in securing employment relevant to their field, and we expect similar results from the undergraduate program. Calendar Number 4B, Hunter College, Bachelor of Social Work. The Silverman School of Social Work at Hunter College seeks to capitalize on the outstanding reputation of its highly competitive MSW program by offering undergraduate social work major. The curriculum will include traditional social work courses plus electives in the social sciences and the two internships. Calendar Number Item 4C, City College, Master of Science in Translational Medicine. Translational medicine as applied to technology refers to the process of transforming or translating basic science discoveries into practical medical technologies for use with patients. Such technologies include therapy agents, medical devices, diagnostic reagents, and computer applications. This proposal is driven by the mounting demand for engineers, physicians, biomedical scientists, and other professionals who can successfully translate our abundant science and technology innovations into actual advances in patient health and healthcare. The Grove School of Engineering developed this program with a grant from the Grove Foundation. Calendar Number 4D, School of Professional Studies of the Graduate School and University Center, Master of Arts in Psychology. The proposed MA in Psychology allows students to concentrate in either industrial, organizational, or developmental psychology, each of which has a direct employment opportunities. With this program, SPS continues to expand its offering that are delivered in a full online format. This will be the first online graduate program in psychology at CUNY. CUNY, Calendar Number 4E, Graduate School and University Center, Master of Arts in Women's and Gender Studies. Despite the fact that women's and gender studies has been a well-established discipline for over 30 years, there's no freestanding master program in the field in New York City. The CUNY Graduate Center has a rich array of faculty teaching and researching in gender-related areas. This will allow students to focus their studies on particular interests while keeping the operational cost of the program low. Graduates are expected to find or advance career opportunities in venues such as nonprofit organizations, colleges, and universities, and community health organizations, as well as continue on for doctoral studies. Calendar Number 4F, York College, Master of Science in Physician Assistant. York College's BS in Physician Assistant program is nationally accredited by the Accreditation Review Commission on Education for this physician assistant. The commission is requiring that all programs be transitioned into, to become graduate degrees. Courses from the existing undergraduate program have been revised, and new courses have been added to warrant a higher credential. York will now be able to recruit from a wider geographic range to meet its enrollment targets for this program. Calendar Number 4G, Brooklyn College, Establishment of the Department of Finance. The new Department of Finance will enhance scholarship, research, and faculty development and collaboration, as well as improve curricular development and increase educational opportunities for students. Plans are underway to establish a finance major as a freestanding degree program housed in this new department. Calendar Number 4H, Resolution to Confer Honorary Degrees at City and Lehman Colleges. City College wishes to confer honorary degrees to Ursula Burns, Chair and CEO of Xerox, and John Michael O'Keefe, Class of 63, Nobel Prize-winning neuroscientist. Lehman College wishes to confer honorary degrees upon Antonio Burgos, President Antonio Burgos and Associates, Miki Grant, Class of 94, actress and composer, Jamie Lucero, President of Gold and Silver Logistics. In addition to the April 7, 2014 CAPRA meeting, Hunter's College requests to award an honorary degree to Freda Lindeman, Class of 63, who's the Vice President and Managing Director of Metropolitan Opera Association, approved. Ms. Lindeman was not able to accept the award, and the college withdrew its request for board's approval. Ms. Lindeman is available to be honored this year, and the college has resubmitted its request for full board approval. Calendar Number 4I, City College of New York, Resolution to Amend the Research Misconduct Policy. The Board of Trustees adopted the Research Misconduct Policy in 2007. Because of changes in federal regulations and experience under the policy, it is necessary and advisable to make amendment to the policy, especially with a view to streamlining the process for dealing with the allegation of research misconduct. These amendments were developed by the Office of Vice Chancellor for Research and the Office of General Counsel, any with consultation with the University Faculty Center. Mr. Chairman, Item 4A through 4E were approved by the committee, and I recommend the approval by the board.
I'll second the committee's proposals. Are there questions for the committee on any of the items in Number 4? All right. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? The items in Number 4 are adopted. Anything further to report from the committee?
No, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
We'll hear next from the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Trustee Frida Foster will report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered five items at its meeting of February 2nd, 2015. These action items are listed in this board meeting calendar as Items 5A through 5E. 5A, Baruch College, New Building Automation System for the Administration Building. To request the City University Construction Fund to execute a purchase order with the train company for design and installation of new building automation system in the Administration Building under the existing New York State Office of General Services contract. The total cost of all such purchases shall be chargeable to the State Capitol Construction Fund, Project Number 3238709999, for an amount of not to exceed $900,000. The contract shall be subject to approval as to form by the University Office of the General Counsel. 5B, Brooklyn College Campus-Wide Fire Alarm and Security System. To request the City University Construction Fund to execute a contract with the firm of Johnson Controls Incorporated to purchase construction and equipment installation to complete the Phase 1 portion of a multi-phase project to upgrade the entire campus-wide fire alarm and security systems at Brooklyn College under existing New York State Office of General Services contract number PT 63103. The total cost of all such purchases shall be chargeable to the State Capitol Construction Fund, Project Number 2875209999, for an amount not to exceed $15 million. The contract shall be subject to approval as to form by the University Office of the General Counsel. 5C, Hostos Community College Allied Health and Natural Sciences Building Complex. To request the City University Construction Fund to execute a consultant contract for an amount not to exceed $10 million with Facility Leaders in Architectural Engineering Design, PC, for the design of the Hostos Community College Allied Health and Natural Sciences Building Complex. The design contract is being awarded to the firm ranked highest during an interview process of firms expressing interest to the request for qualifications, or RFQs, developed by the CUNY Central Office of Design, Construction, and Management. The contract shall be chargeable to the City University Construction Fund for an amount not to exceed $10 million. The contract shall be subject to approval as to form by the University Office of General Counsel. 5D, Hostos Community College, 500 Grand Concourse Renovation of the Fourth Floor Subseller and Installation of Rooftop Emergency Generator. To request the acceptance of the design and renovation of the Fourth Floor Subseller and installation of the rooftop emergency generator at Hostos Community College at 500 Grand Concourse Building as prepared- generator at Hostos Community College at 500 Grand Concourse Building as prepared by Goshau Architects LLP, who were selected through a DASNY Request for Proposal process. And 5E, York College, Campus-Wide Design and Installation of New Air Conditioning Equipment and Information Technology Closets, to request the City University Construction Fund to execute a purchase order on behalf of York College with Simmons Industry Incorporated for services to design and install new air conditioning equipment in 38 IT closets throughout York campus under the existing New York State Office of General Services contract. The total cost of all such purchases shall be chargeable to the State Capitol Construction Fund, Project Number 32379999, for an amount not to exceed $1 million. I hereby request your approval of these calendar items.
I'll second your motion on these items. Are there questions for the committee on any of the items in Number 5? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Those items are adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs, and again, I'll ask trustee Frida Foster to present.
Mr. Chair, can we move on to the next item while this is sorted out?
We'll, we'll table this item until the, until the next meeting to give the committee an opportunity to reflect on it.
Thank you.
Anything further to report?
No.
No, we'll, I'll turn now to trustee, the Faculty, Staff, and Administration Chair, Valerie Steele, to report to us on the CUNY Defined Contribution Investment Oversight Task Force report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to report to the Board on the work of the CUNY Defined Contribution Investment Oversight Task Force. As you are aware, in January 2014, the Board appointed, adopted, an investment policy statement for the university's Optional Retirement Program, ORP, and Tax-deferred Annuity Plan, TDA. A task force comprised of individuals from the Board, the university's finance, legal, and human resources groups, and the faculty senate, has been working with a consultant, KAMIC Retirement Group, to review the pension investment opportunities that CUNY offers its employees. As I have previously reported, we have ascertained that the university is indeed in compliance with all applicable laws and regulations, and the task force is moving ahead to establish policies, procedures, and best practices to make CUNY a leader in this area. The university's present program includes multiple vendors, hundreds of fund offerings, and numerous advisors and educational channels that compete with each other. A detailed evaluation of the benefits of this administrative model, its impact on the cost of funds and services, and the effectiveness of the education being provided to planned participants, is being undertaken by the task force and KAMIC to determine whether alternative approaches would be in the best interest of the university and its employees. I would like to now share with you some of our preliminary findings. Some specific recommendations that are being considered are adding mutual funds to the TIA contract for elective deferrals to the TDA plan, adding a Roth option to the TDA plan to further enhance savings opportunities for participants, eliminating the fifteen-year catch-up election in the TDA plan. Currently, this option allows long-term employees, those with fifteen years of more of service and meet certain criteria, to set aside additional pre-tax funds in any calendar year. However, inaccurate administration of this feature can cause tax liabilities for the individual and penalties for the university, as well as substantial abuse of this strategy by certain employees. Reviewing loan options in both the ORP and the TDA plan. Instances of low, of loan overutilization and defaults are high in the retirement plan and can result in substantially reduced retirement accumulation and tax benefits, tax penalties. The task force will be reviewing these matters and others for recommendation to the Board. In addition, we continue to examine the vast array of investment opportunities that CUNY offers its employees and the fees associated with them. Finally, we're looking at the education and investment advice that CUNY employees receive, and we find that it varies widely according to the vendor, or in some instances, is offered only to a small number of planned participants. We will be looking at how availability of this important retirement education and advice can be expanded to all university employees to ensure that they can retire with adequate portfolio investments. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the Investment Oversight Task Force for their diligent work on behalf of the university's employees. They are trustee Terrence Martel, Vice Chancellor Gloria Waters, Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza, Leslie Williams, Richard, he gets punished next week, yeah, Richard Nadio, Janet Crohn. And I'd just like to add that while I think I previously had said we would, I thought we would be finished this task by second quarter, I am glad to say that the committee has committed to stay involved in this because it is much larger than we initially thought, but we're confident that the outcome will be of even greater benefit to all the employees. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that report. Are there questions on the, for the Oversight Committee on its work? All right. I'm told that Vice Chancellor Hirschenstern has a way for us to consider the Brooklyn College Bylaws Amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to apologize. We misplaced the one-page piece of paper for item number six on the Board calendar. However, since it appears on the Board calendar with explanation, we can return to the Board Committee Chair, and it's very public, and all the information is in front of everyone in the room.
Thank you. The committee considered one item at its meeting on February 2, and the action item is listed in the Board meeting calendar as Action Item 6A, and I move the following item for approval. It resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the amended bylaws of the Brooklyn College Auxiliary Enterprises Corporation. The explanation: The CUNY Board of Trustees approved the original bylaws on June 6, 1996. No changes to the bylaws have been approved by the Board since that time. The auxiliary has determined that it is in its best interests to make certain changes to the bylaws to better meet its needs. In accordance with the Board Bylaw Section 16.10, the amended bylaws of the auxiliary have been approved by the Brooklyn College President and reviewed by the University Office of the General Counsel. The auxiliary will retain its board structure of eleven members composed of the Brooklyn College President, or his or her designee as Chair, five students, three administrators, and two faculty members. In addition to technical revisions, changes to the bylaws include, A, that the Assistant Vice President for Facilities Planning and Operations will be ex officio voting member of the auxiliary board and shall also serve as vice chair, and B, changes involving handling conflicts of interest as required pursuant to the New York Not-for-Profit Revitalization Act. I move this for approval.
I'll second that. Are there questions for the committee or for President Gould on this item? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Item 6A is adopted. Anything further to report?
No, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that, that completes the public business of this meeting, which I now declare adjourned.